Okay, good evening. Welcome, everybody. Welcome those watching on Zoom. Welcome, everybody that's here. To really special meeting of the Kedeta County Public Hospital District Number One. Special meeting because we moved the date from our regular board meeting to accommodate the holidays. Like to welcome everybody here and call the meeting to order. Andy, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Bob Davis.
Here.
Matt Altman.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Yes.
Erica Libinow.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Scott Olander.
Here.
Vicky Machado.
Here.
Amanda Scott.
Here.
Dr. O'Brien.
Here.
Andy Olson.
Here.
Rhonda Holden.
Here.
Jason Adler.
Here.
Jeff Yamada.
Here.
And then it looks like other KVH we have on is Nicole Hilderman, DeeDee Utley, Yvette Hackey, sorry if I said that wrong, and Cynthia Ness. Is there anyone else that's on?
Michelle.
Michelle, thank you.
Welcome. Good to see everybody in here. Erica is Commissioner Limanow is here by Zoom, so just want to pay attention to that. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Any items that need to be changed, additions, deletions?
I would like to ask to add an item for the board to consider approval of the three-year team service agreements.
Okay. So we'll put that under new business, item number nine. Anything else?
Move to approve the agenda as amended, and I approve to second that I mean.
Motion by John, second by Terry. All in favor, say aye. Now. Of the consent agenda. Any changes or additions or deletions to the minutes, or any other items on the consent agenda? Vote to approve. Motion by Matt. Second by Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Item four, public comment and announcements. We'll turn some time over to Scott for public comment, and then if anyone else has public comment, we'll go after him.
Yes, there's, there's two people that have joined, Yvette Hacke and Cindy Ness, that I've asked to, and both Yvette and Cindy are retiring tomorrow. Yvette is the second longest tenured employee at KVH. She's worked with KVH for 37 years.
Wow.
And Cindy is the third longest tenured employee.
They were fine until Scott got there.
And she's worked for us for almost 34 years. Yvette is, works in our registration department. She was the registration supervisor. And so if you, and so if you've had services in the emergency department, lab services, radiology, Yvette is highly likely to have registered you or a family member at some point in, in your career because she has, and then if in, in the HIM department, Cindy has, she's been doing birth certificates. So if a loved one or someone you know has, has had a child here at KVH, Cindy, in all likelihood, was the individual, the person in the medical records department that processed that. So I have, they're, like I said, they're both retiring tomorrow. There is their last day. If they really do retire and don't stay on as perdeem employees, they will be really sorely missed, but they, they, they might. And so anyway, they, I just, there, you know, they've worked through KVH for the years. They've been a part of the, the Paragon implementation, the Cerner implementation, and all the things that have happened here at KVH. And it's individuals like Cindy and Yvette that have helped make KVH the organization that it is. And so we are just deeply indebted for their years of service to the hospital.
And Yvette was also a notary, so I think she's probably given the oath of office in 2025 over the years. So I'm just not sure the doors are going to open on Monday. These two are just such staples of the work that gets done here and of the culture. So just, I would just like to echo everything Scott has said, Cindy and Yvette. So we'll, we will carry on, but it'll be a different organization. So thank you.
That's impressive.
Thank you guys.
Yes, thank you very much for the kind words.
Lot of years, lot of service, lot of, lot of people you've seen. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Yvette. I've worked with you in years, and it was wonderful.
And yes, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to make a career working for KVH.
Yes. Well said, Yvette. Yeah, I have enjoyed thoroughly working with everyone at KVH through the years and have really enjoyed the different things that the hospital has gone through, the different additions and acquisitions. It's been quite, quite the ride. It's been fun.
Congratulations. Enjoy retirement.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments or announcements? Okay, so we'll move into presentations. We have a presentation by Robin Reed and Doug Foul.
Casey H. Jones. Yeah, good evening, everybody. Well, I'll go ahead and get started because we have a lot to go through. We've all, Andy's pulling the slides up. So I, some of you know me, I'm Robin Reed. I used to work for the public health department, and I've been with the Kedeta County Health Network for about three years now. And this is Doug Foul, my assistant director. He's going to be doing the majority of the presentation today, but I'm going to just go ahead and get us kicked off. So the community health assessment and community health improvement plan is something that, this is actually the third kind of full iteration of this process in Kedeta County. And this meets the, the requirements of KVH to have a community health needs assessment done every three years. So this is what we've been working on. Just a little bit about the Kedeta County Health Network. I don't have time to go into a lot of details, but the Health Network was formed as a 501(c)(3) in 2017. And what it came out of, the work that the A Team has been doing, so a group of folks from different agencies that have been gathering weekly for several years now to coordinate care for patients. And, and they just decided that they wanted to kind of formalize and, and start looking more upstream and looking at prevention and community health as a whole. So they applied for with the help of KVH, a grant through the Health Resources and Services Administration, the federal government's part of Health and Human Services. And it was a rural health network planning grant. So that's really what kind of got things kicked off and led to the formation of the network. And the mission and vision were created kind of through that process. And really what we, you know, we focus on population health. And a big, an important piece of the, the network is the cross-sector collaboration. So we really aim to be truly cross-sector. So yes, we have all the health organizations involved, you know, KVH, Public Health, CHCW. But we also have Ellensburg Police Department and the Kedeta County Jail and Central Washington University and Hope Source and many, many others. We actually have around 40 organizations. We started with 10 key organizations in 2017, and we now have over 40 organizations that have been participating in network activities. So just really quick, the required elements of the community health needs assessment that is, comes down from the IRS. It's a requirement for all nonprofit and public hospitals. Some of the components that, it's, it's actually much longer, but we wanted to kind of summarize here. Basically, it has to be done for the whole community that you serve. So in this case, Kedeta County. And you have to identify specific target populations that you serve or that are affected by certain health issues in the community. And then when looking at your data, you have to look at financial and other barriers to care, as well as disease prevention and social and environmental factors as well. So again, looking upstream and kind of looking at those non-traditional health factors. And then you, part of your assessment has to then lead to what are you going to do about it? What are the strategies that you're going to implement to try to make a difference in some of these areas? And that's what we call the Community Health Improvement Plan. And I think this is where I turn it over to Doug, and then I will finish up. So I'll talk to you in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. So looking at specifically at the, who do we serve? And that is Kedeta County. This is from the census in 2019. For population, the Office of Financial Management puts it closer to 48,000. Race ethnicity, mostly white, though our Hispanic population is the quickest growing in our community. Average age distribution, we see a little bit of uptick there in the 2029, most likely due to the college-age population, but pretty evenly distributed. The two areas that we are growing in is our elderly population and our youth. And we can see that here. This is a graph that was done in 2016 as part of the other community, or the previous community health assessment. And on that trajectory, they are still, we're still on, we haven't gone outside of that range yet, but that star shows us relatively where we're at right now. And again, one of the quickest areas of growth is within our youth. Just in the past couple of years, we have a 23% growth in our youth population, and the state average is 8%. So that's definitely something that we recognized when we did a childcare assessment just this last year, to see that that's an area of focus that we'll have to have here in the future. We use the county health rankings model, which is similar to what we used in the last duration of the community health assessment in regards to organizing our thoughts and our processes and understanding what does it look like within our community. So it starts with our policies and programs, but really what we're going to focus on tonight is those health factors that are in the middle, are those that are impacting us, and then the health outcomes there, the length of life and quality of life. So with our physical environment, access to recreation is one of our main ones. We are outpacing the, the state and the nation in regards to recreation fitness facilities for 100,000 people. And as anyone who lives in the valley knows, that we have an abundance of outdoor recreation for individuals to become active.
Don't you mind if I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
So, so you count the student population in the, you know, when you're doing the health assessments, the central student population?
Yes, sir.
What's, this may not be their permanent address. So do you, the reason you do that is because they're here for the majority of the year? How does, how do the regulations work with that for, for who's counted as part of the community, specifically around the student population?
Well, that's a, because this is a collaboration of a number of different sources that we use. And so where they identify or where they get that information from, or it's a little bit squishy in the middle, but for the population numbers. We also know that the census number was a little bit impacted in the 2020 number because it was right when college students went home for COVID. So that we're going to see where that plays out in the population growth. But when we look at the responses, most of the graphs that all look like that on the far left there are from the county health rankings. And so that's a collaboration of a lot of inputs from service providers and treatment providers. And I'm not sure that we can actually separate out those that are college-age populations that are attending for college versus those who are college-age populations that have lived here all their lives.
Right, yeah. I mean, some of the, some of the students, I imagine, don't even list this as their permanent address. You know, they list their parents' house or something, which may be out of the county. But it would really change a lot what our strategies would be if we're, if we have this, you know, group of 10,000 people between the ages of 20, or 18, 22. So I was just, just kind of curious as to, as to whether you're going by permanent address, whether you're just going by who lives where, at what time. Sounds like it's.
The census, from my understanding, when I looked into this a few years ago, now it might have changed, but they, the reason why students are counted in our population, the majority of students, is because they're here more than six months of the year. Now, things might change now, you know, with online and, and all that kind of stuff. But the questions that were asked to determine population was, you know, your primary residence was defined as where you spend more than six months of the year.
Okay, all right.
That's kind of why they're included.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
And then we'll definitely see that come up here in a little bit when we talk about the social determinants of health and that, the impact there, too. So looking at our health factor, the, are the social and economic factors or social determinants, we're going to primary focus on these four areas that were, in the longer version of this assessment, it's a 63-page document so far onward, and you all will have access to that full version. But tonight, we just wanted to kind of focus on the highlights. So first, in our safety, we have, in regards to violent crimes, we're well below the averages in regards to the Washington state and the country. And then you can see the specific numbers here, but then pulling the information from the Ellensburg Police Department, use of force report from last year, they only had three instances in where force was used. And one was in regards to a use of a taser and two uses of a strike, but there was no bodily harm that was done to any individual person, and there was no uses of chokeholds or use of weapons, or lethal weapons. Our employment definitely has had an impact over the past year and a half. This is showing our initial and continued claims in regards to unemployment. In January 2020, our unemployment was about 6.1%. And then September of just this last year is down to 4.1%. So we're actually doing better than we were before COVID happened, but we definitely have had a little bit of a ride as it's gone up and down through, since then. Our poverty rate, we can see that we're ranking higher than the state and the country in regards to poverty rate. Again, this is where what the college student income comes into play. And then when we, I don't see the, the trend line in regards to children poverty on all three measurements between the county and the state and the country, we're on a good trajectory in regards to that's going down, but it's still definitely not where we want it to be. And we'll see how that kind of plays in a little bit later, too, when we look at health disparities. Housing, as I mentioned, is going to be, is one of the biggest things, just in regards to vacancies. And that was, in a number of meetings now spoken to cross-sector partners this morning. A percent of households where housing costs exceed 30% were at 35.59%. And so that's outpacing both Washington state and the country. And this graph here, which is a little bit blurry, but it shows that Ellensburg is showing at the over 34% in regards to substandard housing units. And these five metrics in regards to that, in regards to repairs needed, number of occupants per household, and a few other determinations. And then we see in upper Kedeta County, we see the 28 to 34% in the northern part. And then more of on our eastern side is the 22 to 28%, and only the light pink section there is under 22%, which is, I would think we would want to be. Looking specifically at health behaviors, alcohol and substance use, other substance use, diet and physical activity, and sexual activity were the three that we focused on. And these definitely came out a lot when we looked at, this is a community health survey that we repeated from the 2018 community health assessment. We asked just about every single question the same. We did add a couple of things, as you can kind of see, as we're going to, when we get into some of the different questions. The top three issues that were the top risky behaviors identified by our community members were exactly the same and the exact same order, as it were, but we can see that the numbers are a little bit higher. Response were able to select the top three that they identified as top risky behaviors. Adult substance use, percentage of adult binge drinking in the past 30 days, the number they use for binge drinking is an average of 14 drinks a week for a male, or seven drinks a week for a female. And we are outpacing there a little bit. And then percentage of adults who are current smokers, that number stayed pretty stagnant, and we got that number down to about 13% a few iterations ago, and it stayed pretty stagnant. But what we do see is an increase in regular use of marijuana, which is used in the last 30 days, and has increased about 1% each year since recreational legalization in Washington state. Past 30-day substance use by our 10th graders, this is, this is off of our Healthy Youth Survey. 2018 is the most recent survey that we have to reflect on. The 2020 version was delayed due to COVID. They just completed this last fall. And so we'll be able to compare against that and for our fall of '21 in the future. The first one there is the one we see the biggest increase in, and we've seen the same increase since they started tracking this in 2014, is that e-cigarette use is exponentially going up with our high school students, from 17% in 2016 to 26% in 2018. Alcohol, we see a decrease there, and we've actually seen a decrease in the same periods over the last three Healthy Youth surveys. We've seen that consistently go down by a couple of percent. Marijuana use is pretty stagnant, right there, about 15, 16% over the last couple Healthy Youth surveys, same as painkillers to get high prescription drugs, not prescribed, and all other illegal drugs. Just this last year, or the 2018 iteration started the over-the-counter drug use as one of the things that they're tracking. Looking at the weight distribution for our high school students, or specifically the 10th graders, we have 66% of the healthy weight, but the obese rate is, which is using that BMI of over 30, is at 21%. The 2016 version of the Healthy Youth Survey, that was 10%. So we've over-doubled that percent. The other change that we see is that underweight is at 3%, and in 2016, that was 1%. So there's a little bit of a change there, too, not trying to extrapolate that necessarily, just those are where the numbers have changed. A percentage of adult obesity, again, using that over 30 BMI, it's at 27.6. The last iteration of the Community Health Survey for 2018, that number was at 35%. So that number's actually gone down a little bit. Physical inactivity, this is one of the others that we've tracked over the past couple community health assessments. And we see in 2014, we had a little bit of an uptick there for Kedeta County, where we were pacing right along with Washington state, so we're a little bit higher by a couple of percent, still lower than the United States. But this is 21 to 22% that are inactive. And if we really reflect on what does that mean, that 80, almost 80% of our population are finding ways to become active, to utilize those resources, and to utilize the natural resources around us to be active. Physical activity for our 10th graders, we have 74% that did not meet the daily physical activity. The 2016 version of this, that number was 69%, so up a little bit. The three or more hours of screen time per day, that was 51% in this 2016, so went down just a little bit. And then did not mean participation was a new measure that they just recently added to the 2018 version. Sexually transmitted infections. So this one specifically looking at Clibbe, which is the number one STI tracking in Kedeta County, and we're tracking along with the country and the state, not in desired trajectory, but increasing. Looking at sexual activity of our 10th graders, which was one of the measurements. And it's lying there in my notes, so we're going to challenge my brain real quick, but 38% of our 10th graders report ever having sex, and 13 reported having four or more partners. This is a self-report, and so understanding what does that mean, there's a lot of ambiguity in that. But both those numbers are significantly higher than they were in 2016, where it was 23% ever having sex and 1% having four or more partners. Looking at our health factors in clinical care, access to care and quality of care. Kedeta County is a health professional shortage area. We use this as part of, really every grant that we apply for within the, the health network is identifying the strength of the areas on our providers. Primary care, we can see the difference between ours at 17, 10 to 1, or per resident, to the Washington state number of 11, 80. In mental health, the number gets ever more separated in the 6, 10 to 1 compared to 2, 70 to 1 at the state level. And then at dentists, we also are not pacing with the Washington state at all either. This is going back to that community health assessment where we asked our community members, are they able to get the medical care when they need it? We have 6% strongly agree and 49% agree. A good percentage there who, 20% hung out in the middle category, and just about a quarter disagreed to some extent. With this one is, there was an open-ended question available, asking about ability to access specialists and dermatology, orthopedics, endocrinology, and cardiology and pediatric specialists were the ones that were most frequently brought up on that open-ended question in regards to what they would, specialists they need to use. And this is our healthcare system satisfaction. You can see that just over half agreed to neither disagree or, or agree. Looking specifically at our health comes, what we're working towards, where we, why we measure all of these different tasks, is length of life and quality of life. We're just over a year average greater than Washington state in regards to life expectancy in Kedeta County, and that's right on track with where we were the last time we did the community health assessment. Believing causes of death for 2019, and this is actually 2016 to 2019 was the tracking measure there. I don't need to read off all of these individually for you. You can see them there. In the longer version, we do have all of the numbers and a comparison to Washington state. Some identify as all 10 of these were the exact same 10 as that were on the 2016. Couple of them are towards the bottom, maybe switched to one spot or the other. In categories one through five, we are significantly under the Washington state average. Number six, we're about the same, and number seven, intentional self-harm or suicide, we're above the state average by 10 points. So that's the one where we outpace the state. Looking at online survey, and what is important for quality of life, we see a lot of our social determinants of health that we've already talked about a little bit. The highest one was low crime and safe neighborhoods, followed by good place to raise children, and then access to basic healthcare are the most important for our community members. Looking at the causes for hospitalization, again, these top 10 did not change from the 2016, or 2018, I apologize, community health assessment. And all of these areas, we are significantly below the Washington state average, some as many as half of the rate. The top health concerns for our community members are substance use misuse, mental illness, limited housing that is adequate, safe and affordable, and followed by COVID-19. Comparative to the 2018 community health assessment, we've added substance use as a health concern before it was only identified as a risky behavior, but identifying it as the health condition that goes along with it. We felt we wanted to add it to this year and for future iterations of this question. And then, of course, COVID-19 was a new added to identify. Tracking from Kedeta Valley Fire and Rescue, mental health calls have increased by 90% since 2016, or 2017. And this is again looking at the Healthy Youth Survey, depressive feelings, anxiety, symptoms of suicide. I know I'm running pretty short on time, so I won't go over each of these individual members, but this is the one that is, I want to focus on is 18% of our 10th graders identified attempting suicide in the school year of 2017 to 2018. When looking at mental health and the top causes of stress, again, from our community health assessment or survey, money, finances, social unrest, work, jobs, and then COVID-19. Social unrest, we added in there because of our focus groups with the different work groups, but the Kedeta County Health Network was built up of cross-sector partners, many of which Robin mentioned earlier, but up to 40 different organizations that participate regularly in those. That was a common theme that kept coming up was the social unrest or the social divide in our community. And that tracks right along with what the Washington state behavioral health expectation is in regards to community, especially going through such a long iteration of a crisis event that social divide and social unrest would, would be created. So it's not something that's unique to Kedeta County, but definitely something that we'll be working on. Money and finances, work and job, and mental health or physical health, which Robin and I just today, we talked about separating out for the next time we do this, the survey. But those three that are towards the top that were consistent were the top three when we did this in 2018. Specifically, I mentioned earlier, the health disparities component. This is from Salud, which is, does a county report card for each county in regards to health equity, specifically looking at Latino, Latina, Latinx, or Latinx population. And we can see that some of the measurements that we've already talked about today are very different for our Latinx population. I'm going to go to child, children in poverty, median household income, uninsured population, and teen birth rates. We also, 18% of our students who in the Healthy Youth Survey did not identify as heterosexual, and we know that the health outcomes for individuals who identify as LGBTQ have significant increased rates for stress, and which can relate to substance use, BCD, and suicidality. So I've mentioned these as we've kind of gone along, and in the, the full word report that you all get, definitely goes over COVID impacts quite a bit more in all of those aspects. But the ones that came up most often in our focus groups and in the survey and open responses, no matter what question we asked, there was. And all of those aspects, but the ones that came up most often in our focus groups and in the survey and open responses, no matter what question we asked, there was always. Fill in the blank answers regarding to COVID. Mental health substance use, that community divide that I've already identified and then provided burnout and delay in preventative care. Were the reoccurring themes that came out as a result of COVID nineteen on the health of our community. Now Robin's going to talk about the community health improvement plan.
So who felt like I felt like I just ran like part of the marathon. And as data nerds, it's really hard to narrow that stuff down for a presentation. But like Doug said, you'll be getting kind of a near final draft for your next meeting that will have kind of all the details in it.
Probably on the on the online survey, how many responders were there?
Nine fifty-ish.
Over three, yeah, we were shooting for three hundred and eighty and we had about three hundred and forty to three hundred and fifty.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about what this all means in terms of community health improvement. So just to start off with, this first definition of a community health improvement plan is from the CDC. Long-term systematic effort to address public health problems. Uses community health assessment data to identify priorities, develop strategies. As well as establish accountability in terms of, you know, who's responsible for implementing those and how do we know that we're making progress? And I really like this one. So NACHO is the National Association of City and County Health Officials. We use the term NACHO in our office because it's fun. They go by NACHO, looks outside the performance of an individual organization. And and takes activities of many organizations and looks at how they collectively contribute to community health improvement. And this just really encompasses what the network is all about. Trying to kind of de-silo. All of our organizations and all of our kind of different sectors that we work in. And look at, you know, how can all these different sectors and all these organizations work together toward a common goal? So that's, I think, is really relevant. So the the last community health improvement plan was completed in two thousand and eighteen. For this one, you're going to see if you're familiar at all with the last one, you're going to see a lot of similarities. So we kind of did a little bit more of an update to the plan. Based on the data that you just saw and kind of some of the themes that came out of that. We also took kind of that, the the data and the information to the the network and. Kind of asked them, you know, what what did they see out of this in terms of future goals? And everybody felt there was kind of consensus that our current goals really needed to stay in place. But again, with just some adjustments to reflect current reality, as well as some of the work that we're doing, so. So before I get into those those goals. These different things, so population changes, access to childcare, housing. These were kind of the top factors that came out of the previous health assessment in terms of specific health issues. And so one of the things we asked our network members was how has COVID nineteen impacted these different issues? And so over here you have a lot or significantly not at all, no impact. So you can see there's definitely a few that kind of rise to the top and this was pretty consistent among. All the different groups within the network that we asked this question of. Where mental health and substance use disorder, provider shortages, access to care. Financial security, those were the ones that kind of rose to the top, but housing inequities also. Were up there. So we just thought this was kind of interesting to see, you know, how how things might have changed. Or what things have have kind of risen to the top since pre and post COVID. So we with the community health improvement plan, what we do is we identify what are called strategic issues. And these strategic issues are very high level. They're usually phrased in terms of a question. That leads people then to thinking about action. So the first issue that was identified both in two thousand and eighteen as well as for this assessment is how can we improve the delivery of. Community resources and services. Our goal here is that people in our county get the services, care and resources they need in the most efficient and effective manner. And this is something that really it's it's hard to not want to buy into this, right? No matter what you do in the community. Because it is very, very broad. So how we get more specific than is talking about the strategy. So what are we actually going to do to address this issue and to accomplish our goal? So strategy one is developing a county-wide community-based care coordination system. And so that's what when I mentioned the A-team that some of you, most of you hopefully are familiar with. How the network got started, they are working towards implementing a system of care coordination. And what that means is basically looking at people who have complex needs, whether their health needs or social needs. And maybe need some assistance, kind of breaking down barriers to accessing the services that they need to improve their health and wellbeing. The second strategy is around improving communication and coordination among the cross-sector service providers. So this is kind of done throughout a lot of the work we do because what we're doing is we're all getting together on a consistent basis. Sharing what we're doing, sharing, you know, the services that we have, talking about how we can work together, talking about how we can improve those services. And then the final strategy, that's a new one that we're proposing to add this year, really just to kind of. Reflect the priorities and the, you know, feeling that this is an issue that's really increased in our community. And it's one that we have work groups right now that are working on these issues. So increasing access to prevention, screening, treatment and recovery. Services for both mental health and substance use disorder. So the second issue is how can we address social and upstream factors to improve health outcomes? And this issue really came about recognizing that. You know, while we want to help people access services, we also want to kind of move upstream. In the work that we do and into that prevention realm and recognizing that. Our environments and, you know, our homes and whether or not we have good jobs and our education level, all that contributes to our health and wellbeing. You know, currently or down the road. So our goal here is basically that multiple sectors in Keddes County are aware of how social factors and trauma affect health and wellbeing. So first step is really just that awareness and making sure people, you know, that work in different areas really understand what that means. And how that affects the work that they do. So our strategies are around increasing awareness, implementing trauma-informed policy and practices across organizations. The second strategy is training, basically like doing train the trainers or training people in our community. On near science, who can then go out and talk about that to organizations and different groups in the community. And then increase our collaborations with youth serving organizations such as Youth Services. What's Tyleen's organization? Helen House, Helen House, different organizations like that, the schools in the community to educate on ACES and become trauma-informed. And then the final strategic issue is basically saying, in order to do those things and to continue to do those things. We have to invest and put time and effort into sustaining the work and sustaining the network and sustaining the collaborations. So how can we adequately sustain community health improvement efforts? Our goal is that KCHN as the network. Is high functioning, sustainable rural health network committed to community health improvement. And then we have four strategies that these align really closely with our strategic plan that we just completed this year. So. Foster meaningful participation with our members. Develop and utilize key metrics that help us show our progress and help us kind of stay committed to that common goal. Intertwined health equity and people with lived experience in the work that we do. And sharing the value, communicating the value and impact of our work so that we can generate support, ongoing support. So those are the kind of three main areas that make up our community health improvement plan. And obviously, under these strategies, there's a variety of different activities and programs and services under those and you'll see. Descriptions of that in the final document of the community health improvement plan. So that's what we have for you today. It was kind of a whirlwind. Thank you so much for your time. As long as there's time, we we're happy to answer any questions, also take any feedback. Again, this isn't final, so if you have suggestions or ideas or or thoughts, we can, you know, definitely take that into consideration.
Can I just say, I I feel like we are so fortunate as a rural health system to have the support of Robin and Doug and. It's, they bring a uniquely. Public health perspective, which is is what we need in this work and and so many of these community health improvement plans. That are driven by hospitals, you see the hospital reflected in it. And Robin, KCHN, the public health lands really keeps us honest. To the the entire community that we serve and getting proven population health, not just episodically treating our patients. So. We are pretty unique in in being able to reach out and tap into talent like Doug and and Robin in cases.
I have a question over here on Zoom, Erica Libano. I was shocked by the. The percentage of, I think it was tenth graders who said that they have attempted suicide over. I don't know what timeframe that was, but I wonder how it compares to the previous data period.
Compared to the two thousand and sixteen, it was increased by about two percent. So it went from sixteen to eighteen percent.
Wow, that's that's just really sad. Yeah, I'm hoping that we find ways to tackle that. That's that's tremendous.
I think next month we will be asking the board and correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, we'll be asking the board to adopt. Or approve the community health needs assessment, community health improvement plan.
You're correct.
Julie, would it be inappropriate to mention the one tenth? At this.
The one what?
The one tenth of one percent.
Oh, absolutely.
Just to follow up on Erica's question and and comments, you know, what. I think she said, you know, what are we going to do about that? We, the network and the network's partners have been working for. Well, the network has been working on it for at least a couple of years. There's community members and and other people in the community that have been working on. This initiative for twenty years, fifteen.
Since two thousand and five.
Yeah, so fifteen, sixteen years. Counties are allowed to pass a one tenth of one percent sales tax increase and dedicate those funds to. Mental health and substance use disorder services. This county is one of the only ones in the state who has not passed that tax. And that's a resource available to us to help with some of these issues that yet we haven't yet taken advantage of. There is a public hearing being held next Tuesday at six o'clock. And I think it's all being held online, so you can go on the county website. To and and we're hoping that that's the opportunity to actually pass the tax and get it implemented. So. Thanks for letting me throw that in there.
And that can be passed by a vote of commissioners, correct? It does not need to go to public.
Yeah, in fact, it is supposed to be passed by a vote of the commissioners, so.
And the tax on it, like the affordable housing tax, doesn't there some mental health money tied to that also, or was that?
I don't know. That's a city, that's a city of Ellensburg tax. And so I don't know the the details of that. That's something that we could look into and find out because I haven't heard heard that there's a mental health portion to that.
Resource to, for sure.
And in the meantime, you know, the the county has made available some. Funding through a grant to help DeeDee and the emergency department with patients who are in the ED. We have Dr. My My Flanking on.
Azrael.
Azrael, yes, who's working on substance utilization up in upper county. So we're patching together what we can. While we hold out, hoping that eventually we'll have a reliable stream. Mental health and substance use disorder funding that we'll be able to use to.
All right. Well, thank you very much for having us and feel free to reach out to us if there's any questions or comments in the meantime.
Informative and kind of shocking at the same time. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so go to reports and dashboards, quality with Andy Olson, she called.
So. I have what's included there. Can you answer any questions about that if you have them? One of the dashboards that was unique this month was we have the core relationships satisfaction dashboard. Of this mention, I, you know, we can see things have kind of dipped down. There is a theme in some of it about visitation and incident commanders routinely evaluating that. As we are right now, even in how we can safely allow visitation or not during COVID. But I do hope that's really affected our patient satisfaction.
I know the sepsis, one of them who's all these different things, he just sort of missed one thing by a little bit, knocks you down.
Yes.
But it fluctuates and I know you're dealing with small numbers. You know, of patients. But. A lot of other things you sort of see a trend somewhere, but is there? Do you have any idea why it fluctuates so much?
Uh, no, not necessarily just different bonds of patients. I do think COVID has kind of an effect on it in that. You know, they're looking at looking for COVID and, you know, also trying to look for sepsis. There's been. But we did have our. Septus Awareness Month, like I put in the board packet. The emergency department is working really closely with our sepsis and stroke coordinator, Cody Staub and Bonnie Gibson in quality and. They're doing some really great work to, you know, see how they can improve that. And have had some increased education in the month of September, some really nice stuff that was put out for nurses and. Dr. Lindsay presenting to the ED department providers. I'm I'm hoping it looks a lot better. I'm hoping we're doing, they're doing a lot of work to get that standard. But what's frustrating in this last month is there wasn't one thing. It was kind of all in one place. And one of the things we were looking for is as RPG came on, you know, was that what was going to happen was that we were going to miss those second lactates or that and it hasn't just, it hasn't been anything consistent like that, so.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Andy?
I have have two other things, so I just wanted to let you know that you should expect the final copy drafts. To and the proposed measures to come from QI Council to you at the next board meeting. With the recommendation that they, I expect this will happen. We, that they will recommend, it's approved at the next board meeting. Right now leaders are working on refining them and just making sure they align with the strategic plan. So you can expect that's where we are in the process of the annual copy planning. And lastly, I'm sorry, I was delinquent in sending an email to you about PFAC nomination. So I got that done before this meeting, but that was. Not when I, I thought I had done it already, so. But please do, if you if you know of someone, please email me and get me their contact information. We'll reach out to them. If you want to talk to them about it and and let them know kind of here's what these roles are. You can, but I'm happy to cold call people too and and explain to them what we're looking for and and see if they could fit or interested. That's all.
Thanks, Ben. CEO report.
I am happy to answer any questions. I do have a couple of updates and. I want to talk about the nomination to the congressional committee that I discussed in my. CEO report. I'm not sure Rhonda's very happy with me at this point, because this turned out to be a big deal. But to date, we are working on a deadline of next Friday to get this nomination turned in. To CMS, it is what we're looking for, this. Ground ambulance payment advisory committee is required by the No Surprises Act, which was passed in. Passed in two thousand and twenty-one. When we looked at the composition of this advisory committee, it became apparent that there was not necessarily a rural perspective. So we've been working with the American Hospital Association and Washington State Hospital Association. Who are both throwing their weight behind Rhonda's nomination. To one of the three positions that the secretaries of HHS, Labor and Treasury have to nominate or to appoint. More or less at large. advisors in order to represent specific sectors of the ground ambulance industry. We feel it's very, very important that the rural perspective, I, there are a few lines of service that are as different in rural as they are in urban. So having that rural perspective, I think is very important. To date, we have the support, correct me if I go wrong here, Michelle, of our legislative delegation. So Representatives Dent and Yubara are on board, as is Senator Warnock. As I said, HA and WISH are going to support this nomination. Rhonda's been busily updating her CV and writing a nominees letter. The WISHA and HA are reaching out to the Washington State Department of Health to actually write the nominating letter. So an agency is going to be nominating this. Our federal lobbyist is working with Kim Schreier's office and with Patty Murray's office to get the endorsement of those following this. So all of this is due next Friday. And Mandy, we, Michelle, Rhonda and I are, are working on this. We will also be asking you, Bob, and, and Floyd from Hospital District Two for letters. And Rhonda's, as I said, not very happy with me. I think she'll be an absolutely, I, I don't know if you will share the packet at next month's meeting, but Rhonda's a very impressive nominee for this role, so.
Thank you. I appreciate your confidence, but again, I'm pretty sure you were looking at Scott.
They did that, they did that for a couple of days. So other than that, we did have an event that I've asked Jeff Yamada to address with regard to our electronic health record. He'll have an opportunity a little later in the, the meeting, I think, to address that as part of his report. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Julie? Thank you, Julie. So Vicki.
Um, yes, so my report is there. I do want to just expound a little bit on the surgical services situation. And we have lost several staff members just for various reasons, not not related to directly to COVID at all. And so we've secured two surgery texts through agencies. And we secured one RN through an agency. So that relief will probably come in January, but currently we have to be pretty selective about how we're scheduling cases. Some days there may be only one room open because of the staffing situation. And but Amy is working really hard and her team there is taking massive amounts of call just to cover the emergent and after hours stuff that does come in. We've seen a little bit of movement in the, in the agency. The agency availability, we have not, however, seen a lot of applicants come in directly for, for jobs, especially in the RN. CCU still has two nights posted, ER has two nights posted, and AES three physicians. So still struggling with that, but I think as we've heard, that's all over. It's not specific to us. Otherwise, I'm happy to speak any questions or.
Mention in your report, the surgical services expansion. Is there any, anything to report on that? I mean, you mentioned a couple of things.
Yes, right now it's, it's pretty preliminary, but every week it gets a little more. They need weekly with Ron and his team and the architects about that plan. And then we, we follow up about every two weeks, I think. With John and the rest of some SLT members. So it's slowly coming along. We don't want to rush it. We don't want to miss things and we don't want to just jump into something. So it's, it's kind of like a back and forth.
Everything seems to be on track. Could you remind me what the timeline is? I forget what the timeline is.
Well, since you're asking me and not Ron Erlock. So we're hoping to take this to the next year, which would mean we would be breaking ground on this in 2023.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Vicki? Thank you. And Rhonda. Counselor Officer.
Yes, hi. I'm still struggling a lot, I think, in home health and hospice. As you can tell, we have quite a few openings there. I did have an offer out for one registered nurse who was supposed to start on the 30th and her employer enticed her with money. So she remained with her current employer and did not take our position. So that was just a real stab in the chest, I think, for the staff. They were pretty deflated by that. I haven't been able to get any travelers, but we did have our occupational therapists start this week. So we're really happy about that. And I do have two applicants for a physical therapy assistant position since we haven't had an applicant for a physical therapy position that's open. So we have some good candidates there that we're interviewing. Other than that, I don't think I have any updates unless you had any questions about the ONRAD incident, when we had a loss of service from our radiology group.
Rhonda, can we sort of tackle that whole question of the vulnerability there when Jeff does his presentation?
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Rhonda? Good luck in your nomination. Yeah.
Thank you very much for your support.
Barry Bar is on vacation, but she's not on. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, good.
Okay, we'll go to, instead of Michelle being at the end, now she's in the middle. So Michelle.
Hey guys, I apologize that you're seeing my face. I can't get my camera to actually work. So I do not have anything additional to add, but I will also take any questions you have.
I talked to Julie about this when we had our agenda review. So since we couldn't do the employee appreciation event or earlier, I guess it would be this Saturday, since we can't do that. I hear you guys are sort of working on something that maybe, I mean, are we going to be able to do something to appreciate employees before the end of the pandemic in 2084?
I sure, so, you know, kind of what's rattling around in the back of my mind is can we do something in May that corresponds with Hospital Appreciation Week? Or sometime in that, the weather will be nicer. It could give us more options of indoor, outdoor. And that would sure be my goal. I, I don't, you're not alone in that. I know Julie's not alone in that. And I know it's overall, we're trying to figure out how to move past contingent upon COVID and just make operations work adjusting to COVID. So in answer to your question, yes, we will do something before 2084. And most definitely within 2022.
On a smaller scale, Matt, we also do have a recognition committee who does a regular planning for holiday raffles and support. And so if there is employees in the board who would like to be connected to that, then Michelle or I could get you connected.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's not much we can do to help with sort of burnout and stuff like that, but whatever we can do, I know that speaking for the other member of the board, I know we'd be very supportive of that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. Jeff Yamada, Chief Officer.
Hi, everybody. So just wanted to tell you, we had, IT was very busy over the last month here. We had two instances where we had some extra things to do. One was the downtime for Cerner. And so that was probably the biggest to, I believe, the biggest downtime we've had with Cerner since the implementation, probably four years ago. Through that, you can read my report. But really, I think through Cerner's leadership, new leadership, so now Cerner has a new CEO and they have a new president on the community work side, which is the environment we're in. They're very transparent of the cause. And so we sat in a critical incident review earlier this week on Monday, going over what had actually happened. And obviously very transparent that it was a human error on their part and some of the steps and processes that they will be implementing in the future to help prevent some of this happening again. Obviously, this is all, as we know, computer equipment and other things. So we'll probably experience other downtimes in the future. But today, this was probably a bigger one for us. On the IT side, we were very involved over those almost 48 hours. I think I was on a bridge call for 18 hours straight, going through this, as well as other hospitals that were down. So in domain C, the environment that we're in, there are 40 other hospitals or 40 hospitals. So 39 others that are in our same environment and was in our same situation during that time. So any questions on just that piece of it? What we did on our side, just to let you know, is since we, you know, we weren't able to, we weren't the ones that were trying to fix the issue. It was all Cerner. Our job on, on the KVA side was really to keep the communication line open, keep the progress on updates and what was going on. And really to support staff that were out there. So the informatics team pretty much rounded during that whole downtime to all of the different areas to make sure that their staff felt supported and to help, you know, jump into anything that they had questions to during that time. It was a partial downtime. And so there are things that were working and then other things that were not. So one of the highly impacted areas was lab. Lab wasn't working through the entire time. It was a database issue. And so those, like I mentioned, were always, is always very complex. And they need to make sure that they correct the problem and don't even extend it even further or, you know, make it more complicated to resolve. So it was a slow process, but it got all resolved in the end. And to this day, to now, I don't think we've had any residual effects of it except for, you know, obviously going back in and trying to put in the pieces, parts and pieces back into the system during that downtime. So that involves some downtime procedures, paper documents and other things that we had to recover from. And so the one thing that Julie was bringing up is really around, and with ONRAD and some of our other applications is really around what up, what's our business continuity plan? So when we do have critical systems down, how does the hospital still able to function? See patients, right? And, and to continue its, its service. And so that's something that I think we'll be working on here, very highlighted during this event that we need to, you know, probably improve that and in, in most cases, test that from time to time. And so on an annual basis or every six months, you kind of test that program and you say, okay, the computer system is now down. How do you function? And, and to make sure that all of that documentation and other things is up to date, so.
I'd just say Jeff's kind of downplaying, I think, the role that his staff played. They were in a very frustrating position is that there was nothing they could do. And so they were out in all the departments, the information technology, that staff pulled all nighters just being there to support the staff and doing whatever they could. So just phenomenal work done by a very frustrated IT staff. So.
Was down, were the clinics down?
The clinics were down for pieces of it, but you know, they closed at five or six. And so it went through the night and, and there were a little, some effects as they were coming back the next morning. But for the most part, they were still able to function. They had patients coming in. One of the issues is they were having patients coming in for their appointments, but they, early on, but could not see the schedule. And so there was that type of effects to the system. One thing I am doing though, so we had two different events that happened that, you know, we had to use our staff to help support and sometimes help figure out what the causes were. And these were two domain issues. So all of the hospitals were affected. One of the things that we've done here is recorded all of the times from our resources that were involved in trying to fix the problem or recover from the problem. And I'm actually charging that back to Cerner. And so they're, they do have a downtime module. The Cerner account rep was just here yesterday. And in talking to her, one of my goals is to get that at a highly reduced cost because of these two events. That would help, it wouldn't solve all the problems, but it would help mitigate some of the problems in the future if we ever had some downtime. So. And from my understanding, that first event that we had back about six months ago, that was already approved and credited to our account. And so we could use that, now we could use that money for any, any program that we buy for, for downtime. So.
Just to add on one thing to Jeff, you know, this, when Cerner's down, also it impacts revenue capture. And we've gone back and used paper charts and things like that and have captured all the revenue that was not posted. And it actually wouldn't have posted because of the downtime. So that's all been captured. And so the November financial or the revenue that we're going to report for the month of November, it's going to be fine. There's no impact at all.
What, what did the typical patient experience? How, where were they? And how did it impact the service we offered them, if at all?
I think there, yeah. For, I'm just talking from the clinic perspective, because I think there are a few that they had to reschedule. I think on the hospital side, I know Vicki, you can probably talk to that a little bit more. But from an inpatient side, I think everything was still going, right? I think they had to, they had to close some of the draw stations right around that for a time period.
Right. We closed the MAC draw station and then we sent that staff over to the hospital to help since every specimen had to be hand labeled. Everything hand entered into the computer and then hand resulted back out. So we did close that. From Carrie's perspective in the clinics, I believe she said that they only had one or two providers that were still seeing patients because they didn't have access to their medical record. So they didn't know why they were being seen or their past medical history or what medications they were on. So if they needed medication refills, adjustments, they couldn't do that. So I think they only had a couple of providers that saw patients that day.
Is that included in some of the financial stuff Jeff was talking about as far as lost revenue? Because these providers couldn't do their job because Cerner was down, or is that a different equation?
I would think they would have been rescheduled, but yeah.
I mean, so did providers just go home or like, you're like, we're, we're dead in the water. So.
Yeah, they can't chart. They can't. So, so part of, one of the first things that comes to mind, and Jeff touched on it, is they don't know who's on the schedule. So that's part of the downtime module that Jeff's talking about. It doesn't do all things, but at least you know who's going to be coming through the door. So you know, if, if you have to cancel them, you can reach out and cancel them if they need to do that. So yeah, you're sitting there staring at a black screen. And so it really is a important opportunity for us to, to think about how we're going to protect our business model as well as our ability to deliver patient care. If this were to go on for two weeks or if one of these key partners were to have a ransomware attack or something. But the character of the ONRAD downtime, Rhonda, can you speak to that a little bit? Because that was different really than the Cerner downtime.
Right, that was quite a bit different. They actually ended up with a corrupt database. So we were able to, on our side, still perform the imaging exam. And Dr. Jensen, during the day, while he was here, he was able to read those exam. And then he could do a verbal report. He couldn't dictate. He couldn't dictate into their system or anything like that. So when he left at 5:00 PM and we still weren't up and live, we had to go on diversion for the hospital. Meaning that we couldn't accept any admissions or any ER patients because we had no one to read those x-rays. And the ED provider working at the time felt like he was pretty comfortable, you know, reading a chest film, but certainly not a CT, that's not his area of expertise. So we had to go on divert for that. Fortunately, they were able to get that up, I think, by seven or eight PM. And we were able to then have all those images that we had been doing during the downtime after Dr. Jensen left, read by OnRed. And again, this wasn't just us, it was everyone that they have a contract with across the United States. So it was a significant outage. During that time, we did reach out to Memorial to see if they would allow us to push images to them because we do still have a VPN connection and see if we could have their providers read for us. But we weren't able to get that accomplished. But that's one of those things, like Jeff mentioned, for our business continuity, what can we put in place in the future so that if something so catastrophic happens and isn't resolved quickly, we can continue to admit patients?
So were the providers that were still in the clinic seeing patients, did they still have their scribes or was the scribe taken down too because of the Cerner?
My understanding is they, scribes couldn't access Cerner either. That's where they document, so they couldn't.
You could talk to him on the phone.
Yeah, it's two-sided, so they can still do it in their system. They use their own system, they just couldn't download it at the time to Cerner, so.
But it was downloaded later then?
Yeah, I'm not sure what they were actually doing during that time. But they are, they are two separate independent systems until they downloaded into Cerner, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, and Rhonda touched on something that I've asked Vicky to address for you, because I know, I, I throw around the term being on divert. And I think it's important that we understand what that means and what the spectrum of divert means, because when we went on divert at 5:30, and, and I'll just say Dr. Jensen had a plane to catch. I mean, otherwise he would have stuck around for us. But we had no idea when we were coming back up. So if you can, luckily, you know, and, and I was out of town following this, the text messages. The window between Dr. Jensen's leaving and OnRed coming back up was relatively short. But we did not know that. So can you just address a little bit what the ED does and what that means?
Right, so once they decided that, yes, we had a problem and no one to do that. But the term divert, and I don't like that term either, and we've never really had to do that. We never say we're on divert, but this was a legit reason. The supervisors usually notified which they were, which, which happened. What we do is connect with the ED physician personally and just say, this is the situation. Depending on the provider, some of them are able to get a wet read and go, oh, that's not a broken leg, it's just a sprain or whatever. However, that, the skill set is so different with all of them. Normally what happens, we call EMS, KVFR, and we call Upper County Street Two Ambulance and say, this is our situation, we have no one to read images, we can take them, we have no one to read them. If you have something critical such as a stroke, which requires a CT immediately, please go to the next nearest facility, would that be Izakua or Yakima or Wenatchee. There's usually a conversation from the ambulance personnel to the medical director, which is the ED doc at that time, to discuss a case and then decide, no, you need to go here or there. And walk-ins, we have no control over, we take them in, we do a medical screening exam and then decide whether or not they need to be shipped somewhere else because we can't do anything. So we notify all the outline hospitals that we, that is our normal transfer pattern and let them know, because all of a sudden, if they're seeing a bunch of our patients, they, they get a little curious. Why are you sending me this? So we notify them ahead of time that our imaging is down and that we may have to be sending our patients there. So we notify the facilities, the EMS, and then make sure that there's a communication between our ambulances and the physician who's on at the ED at the time. And then thankfully, this didn't happen for a long period of time and we were able to, you know, come back up by about eight o'clock, seven thirty or eight. And when I went back through the transfers, I did not see anything that was transferred because we did not have energy. So that was a good.
CT is the classic, when CT is down here, we get very nervous because that CT is an important part of the protocol for stroke patients. And that's one of the reasons we're really anxious to build redundancy into our technology as well as our personnel. So that we have one CT in Kittitas County. And as we look at this, this OR and, and campus expansion, getting a second CT online is one of the things that we want to do with that. So you know, when you're the only hospital in the county, downtime is absolutely critical to the population. So those are some of the things we're trying to achieve with expansion.
It doesn't, I mean, it just makes you feel super vulnerable, obviously, like especially when you hear like with the pipeline is down for a couple of weeks, how that affected the whole country. We're tied with Cerner and they have a major issue. There's a lot of Cerner hospitals out there, big and small.
So I'm going to try to talk Jeff into a tabletop next year, where we actually run through a scenario of a variety, these different partners failing for whatever reason, and, and how's that going to impact revenue capture, the ED providers, but how, how are we going to address, there's no place for these folks to go. What are you going to do about reading these exams? What's the response going to be? So I think it'll be a good activity.
Yeah, I'm currently working and doing our annual SRA security risk assessment with a company called Fortified. And one of the things I'm going to reach out to them is, is really do they, do they do a service around business continuity? And so there is an actual kind of formal plan of how you go through that. And so I'll see what they have to offer as we go through this SRA. And then maybe include that on the backend of this, so.
But OnRed was a corrupted, something got in their system to cause it to collapse? What caused?
We haven't had our debriefing yet to know why, so I just know that it was a database issue and I don't know what caused it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jeff? Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ron. Facilities.
Yeah, I'll give you a status update on the, the lab project, that's, well, let's see, phase one will be in, finished like the first week of January, so we are right on target so far with that. And it's, it's going super smoothly. There's been just next to no problems inside the hospital with that construction active, so critical about that. But so long as materials show up when they are supposed to, we'll, we'll be in good shape, so. That's moving along. On the surgery project, yeah, we're meeting weekly on that and we're hoping to have the design, basically the floor plan, set by the end of December. And so we're pretty much on target for that. And that just means basically having all the rooms, you know, set where they're going to be, but then, you know, within the rooms, the layout could still change some after that, but we really want to have that part set. And so in January, we're going to do a kind of a workflow assessment to lay out the rooms and, and really try to make it that works well for the staff. So that's coming up in January. But the map or the, the print that was in the packet is already outdated. We've, and that's not etched in stone either, but we've swapped the equipment storage in the central sterile with the state of constructability. And we started to look at keeping CS up while we expand that space. And it became really complicated. There is a possibility of possibly using a mobile unit to, to mitigate that, so we're going to look at that too, but we're really thinking just swapping those spaces so that we can build it out and just let them move into it will be the simplest. Let's update on that. Is there any questions on the report I provided?
So the design team is meeting weekly, but we also have a, a side team or, or an oversight team that consists of Vicky and Rhonda and John Ward is on that, Ron's there and, and so less frequently, we meet to get caught up on where the design team's going and to help make any decisions where there's some questions. So we met just yesterday. And yeah, this, this, every day it changes. So this, this schematic is very different than what that, the deciding team with that yesterday.
I'll just say it's, that the, both teams really are working really well. We're getting lots of good input from all the different departments. And from SLT on that, so that part is, is really going smoothly.
Any other questions for? Ron? Thanks, Ron. Lots going on there. Dr. Ryan?
The MEC initially recommended approval of twenty applications. Was in the initial list that you may have received. But OnRed requested we withdraw one of those. Practitioners, radiologist Martin Price, because they suffered. Now it's nineteen, which I think Mandy updated. So maybe you have an original and then an updated version of the list of providers recommended.
I don't have an updated list, but I did not find his name in the file.
She got a top and I'm pretty close, you know. Okay, all right. So, you know, we just recommend that these providers be given their appointments and leveraging and requested.
I'll move to approve credential list for this month.
And I seconded. Motion by John, second by Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Do I vote on this one since I was not able to review them or do I abstain from voting? What's the appropriate course of action?
Since you didn't get a chance to look at it.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Just make a note of. Erica wasn't able to look at it, but four ayes, one not seen.
Thank you.
Great, and then Dr. Martin's report.
Out of town as well, he'll be back on Monday, but I think we have some spotlights, is that right?
That is correct. Let me grab the screen here and we will get them going. It's just always fun to try and figure out how to do this. Via film. Okay. So. Let's see if this works. All right, do you guys see Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Perfect.
I think I'm career in medicine because I've always kind of been in medicine. My mother was a nurse and my father worked not in medicine, but they air shift coincided, we ended up staying in the hospital. And so then I started working in the hospital as a volunteer when I was fifteen. And I worked in a lot of it, I was a supply clerk, I've just kind of always been in that environment, so. I love OB care, I love taking care of moms, I love delivering babies. And then DYN care is pretty special too, because I get to actually have a patient that has a problem, kind of fixes it. Or at least helps them, help their life and their quality of life. I would say that my mission in my practice is to help women in their day-to-day life. Help their quality of life, whether that's helping their bleeding so that they can be more active, helping, you know, with COVID cure issues, so they feel like they don't have to run the bathroom all the time. Helping, helping them grow their families with making their pregnancy safe and their delivery safe.
That is Dr. Dawson. And here is, as soon as it pulls up here, one of our very longtime providers that hopefully recognize.
The foundation of what I do is probably my, my primary passion in that. Working with patients and to improve their health. That's what I'm in medicine for. What it's all about. I enjoy working with patients. So I enjoy doing the number of dermatology, dermatology procedures, removing skin cancers, biopsy, that sort of thing. I performed that sublimation in the clinic. I enjoy injections. Helping people with arthritis and their knees or other joints. My ideal doctor-patient relationship is a relationship in which the patient is part of any healthcare decision. I do a lot of what's called shared decision-making, where we discuss the advantages and disadvantages and come to a, a plan that seems right for that, that particular person. In general, the, the, the foundation of what I do, day in and day out, communicate with patients, try to connect with them to improve their health, help them feel better and feel the best. Is, is what I enjoy most in medicine.
There you go. That's what we have for this evening.
He still looks pretty young. Great, anything else? And providers spotlight? So we'll move into finance.
Well, thank you. If we can start on page forty-five, the stats page. Like the line two is patient data, and that is a real driver of inpatient revenue. And you see the, the really strong positive variance. Vicky's ICU and med search departments were very, very full. We had an average daily census, inpatient census of twelve point one. And that is way up from the prior year. And then we had the, some of the net other negative variances that we have on this were all decisions that we'd made to be able to care for the high inpatient COVID census that we had. And so the, we, as you recall, we stopped doing elective surgery cases the third week of September and did not start doing elective cases till October twenty-fifth. So we were not doing elective, any elective cases for five weeks. And so that's, that is the reason for those negative inpatient and outpatient surgery minutes on line nine and ten on the cases also, and then also on line thirteen for GI procedures. And I will say had, as busy as the med search was and, and V staff, Vicky's staff floated over and helped with care for some of the infections that we had. And I don't, I do not believe we could have survived had we not, not taken that step. So this was absolutely critical to do. And so the other number that is quite interesting on this is the case mix number at one point three one. We typically run about one point oh. So for the case mix measures, the acuity of the patients, inpatients at the hospital. And so they were, we had very, very sick patients that we were caring for. And so anyway, these, these numbers were factors in driving the revenue that we have for the month. ER was very busy. Urgent care busy, lab a very busy. Radiology a little off and just because of not doing some of the elective, elective surgery cases that require imaging. And so if, then if you'll move over to page forty-seven, you'll see the, the financial results. And we had a slight positive revenue variance for the month, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Inpatient a positive revenue variance of five hundred ninety thousand dollars, and that's just the high. Inpatient a positive revenue variance of $590,000. And that's just the high inpatient census that we have. And then the, the negative outpatient revenue variance and pro fee revenue variances were, was related to not doing elective surgery procedures. And so, but ironically, inpatient services reimburse at a higher overall rate than outpatient services. So the positive contractual variance that we had for the month is, is accumulation of the high inpatient care that happened in the, the previous month also, because we, we do our reserve based on the accounts receivable that we have. And so our recovery rate is higher for the inpatient care. And so our, our shift to hire more inpatient care as relative to outpatient care actually helped us with the, the positive revenue variance with the contractuals. And on the other, another thing that really helped us for the month is in the other operating revenue line. We received $654,000 check from Caravan ACO for work done in 2020. Or in this case, and it's work not done in 2020. We had low patient volumes with Caravan in 2020 and we got a a bonus from Caravan for not reducing utilization for and then also in that other operating revenue line is $160,000 of cash received from the Ames grant that we had for working on, working for integrated behavioral health in the failing medicine at the Ellensburg Clinic. Expenses tracked with the high census and revenue variances that we had. So negative, it's overall expense ratio of 538,000. Frankly related to the revenue and what, what we're trying to do to care for patients. Posted in operating income for the month of $1.8 million. And, and then a net income for the month of $2 million. And then we're trying to continue to trend very nicely year to date. We have a positive operating income of 10,071,000. And positive variance there of 7.8 million. So.
You kind of blew the budget.
Quite a few buckaroos.
So very, just a very, very solid month for the organization and, and, and really quite a challenging month too. But we, like I said, we weren't counting on that caravan money that showing up, but it sure made things look nice this month. On page 46, our, our, our cash, base cash on hand position improved by 2.2 days to overall growth in cash was about $587,000. And then our days and accounts receivable, although they decreased in aggregate, or excuse me, the, the overall AR decreased. The days stayed the same just because of the revenue. Shortfall. I won't call it a shortfall because we, but it was, we, we've had positive revenue variances for the most part of over $2 million for most months. So just a very, very good financial statement to report.
Fast forward and I'm correct that we have the biggest cash month yet in November?
In November, yes, we had our strongest cash month ever of over about $12.3 million. And, and we had multiple factors, but revenue cycle did a good job in collecting. It wasn't one of their best months, but it was a good month for them. We received a cost report settlement of over a million dollars that hasn't been accrued for previously. And so this is work from Jason and revenue cycle in collecting some of the allowable Medicare bad debt and charity that we can report. And then also we received, we did a we applied for some of the provider, the new phase four provider relief funds and received $2 million. We can go for provider relief. So, so a very, very, very strong cash month for November that we will report. Any questions related to the, the month of October? Included in your, in the packet beginning on page 50, 50, 50 through page 54 is the proposed 2022 budget. And this is a, Jason and I have met with Vicky and Rhonda and Amanda and all of the directors in, in, in putting this budget together. This is a it's a team effort in preparing this budget. And so we've met with, with really all the people that contribute to the organization. And developed, looked at the anticipated volume. In the case of surgery, we went, went doctor by doctor and looked at the current number of cases they're doing now. And, and we have some doctors that are going to be increasing their F T a little bit. So we, we, we factor that into our projections. And so this is a, this is really to give, you know, we're asking to spend a lot of money next year. And so we're going to give you a month to review this, this document. And then we'll have, we'll dig into it in, in much more detail. At the December meeting and January. And, but if, if in the interim, if you have questions that anything looks different. Or something that is unusual, but you have any questions about, shoot, me an email and we'll try to be prepared to, to address it when we have the, the next, at the next meeting. And then Mitchell's grant report is included here. And the one thing I'm going to just add to the last item on this grant report is relates to the first care coordination for the date childcare. And that grant has been submitted, submitted on Monday. And so we're hoping to have have good news on that grant. And so we can help the community expand childcare. And so that, that is a grant that is, is in the works. They were actually submitted and now we're just waiting to see what the results will be. So.
And this is one of the projects that we're, that's really being coordinated that brought those partners together.
And then I have a capital expenditure request for the tax to replace our PEXIS drug dispensing system that we have. And I have passed out the, this is on page 57, the, the amount on page 57, I didn't have final numbers. So I passed out a revised expenditure request and narrative and the amount increased from $850,000 to $864,421 and 72 cents. And so this is we have we've discussed previously, we have, we're looking for opportunities to own equipment as opposed to lease equipment when it makes financial sense. And this is one of those pieces of equipment that we have leased over the last 10 years. And in doing so, we have paid for it more than twice under the lease arrangement. So it is a significant expenditure. But it has, we think by owning this piece of equipment, it will actually save the organization about $10,000 over the life of this asset. The current, current piece of equipment has lasted 11 years for us. The, the new version that we have, we think will also last 10 or 11 years. So we will not we won't make any payment on this equipment till the, it is installed and operational. And in addition, this is actually an expansion of our existing system. We're purchasing three additional PEXIS machines that will be in three of our clinics and in Clayon Valley Medicine, Valley Medicine at Ellensburg and Women's Health. And the additional cost for those PEXIS machines is about $106,000. And that is included in this total that we are asking, asking the board for approval. And John is there. John and I met, Nasser met yesterday to kind of dig in. I didn't have final numbers when, when I met with John and Bob at the finance committee. So I nailed down the numbers for the purchase price. And then Nasser provided a much better explanation about how this piece of equipment is used. And I was able to provide that.
Yeah, I appreciate that Scott arranged for me to meet with Nasser and one of the pharmacists, Matt. And have a chance to ask a lot of questions, look at the equipment, kind of learn about how it helps us. I think a couple of the highlights I walked away from is these three additional machines you're talking about. In essence, just through revenue capture, you know, we expect that they'll pay for themselves that, that additional growth of this system. Some of the machines are running Windows 7. And if any of you run a Windows computer, you know, Microsoft has told people they don't really support that from a security standpoint anymore. And, you know, again, got to watch in an operation and just see the, all the cross checking that goes on. And, you know, from patient safety to so much less likely to give somebody the wrong medicine because of all the checks and balances from potential theft and all these sorts of things. Inventory control. And, and again, the way I understand it, kind of just how it ties into Cerner and proper billing is done. So you capture the revenue properly and things like that. So you know, as Scott mentioned, you know, I fully support where we can switching from lease to ownership. We're large enough now and it saves us money in the long run. The only thing we kind of left off on that I'll again push on is that if we move forward with this as an ownership, that they work hard to get software upgrades included as part of the purchase or the service agreement. Just we don't want to get blindsided four or five years from now with somebody saying, oh, now we want another hundred grand for you to have current software.
So that is included.
You know, and I know you have a lot of eyes on those contracts. So the lease expires when? You know?
Um, I, I will continue to use these existing machines, but I think we needed to make a decision by the end of December on this.
And, and if we approve it today, when would the new machines be in and ready to go approximately?
I, I think it's about six months.
And so during that interim, we can continue to lease essentially month to month. Nobody's going to say, great, we're taking our machines and going home then or something. Okay. So that's good. So, you know, if anybody else has any thoughts, that's great. I'm ready to prove pose a, you know, a motion to approve when all the discussion's done.
Yeah, I, I highly support this too, because I've seen these machines in function here with a different brand, but we and they really do pay for themselves. They also keep things highly secure. And they also help patient safety. So you came up with some really good discussion figures on this. So this is extremely good investment in the organization. We will probably hear some whining from some of the clinics because they're used to just opening a cabinet, taking what they want out. But now they, they will have to log in and get it. And so this will help actually prevent defects from entering the system. So I highly support this too.
And I, I'm a little suspicious too with our meeting down the pharmacy last night set the stage for, boy, this is a crowded room when everybody's trying to work all at once. I'm just saying, I don't want to lead to, but I'm saying.
We have fallout from GEMBOs that, that like that a lot of the time. So I think an ultrasound event happened last year.
So I would move to approve this capital expenditure for the new drug dispensing machine.
Motion by John, second by Terry. Seconded it. All in favor, say yes or aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Thank you very much. And the last item that I have before you is, there is, I passed out an email that sent by Kaiser to Dr. Martin and myself. We had a, a telephone, at Kaiser's request, they had, they asked us to have a telephone conversation and we did. And Kaiser has signed a two-year agreement with a small number of employers or individuals that cover, that began in 2021 and continued in 2000 through 2000, the end of 2022. And, and these are HMO members. There's about 200 of them. And Kaiser recognizes that we do not have a contract. But the, and will not have a contract. And with their filing with the Office of Insurance Commissioner, they have to have a document. They have to have what they call an alternative access delivery network. And so they are asking K V H to be a to agree to be an alternative access delivery network so that they can these 200 individuals that live in Kittens End County have coverage through a Kaiser HMO plan who have access, continue to access part of K V H. And and this is that this was the ask that they had. And Julie and I have talked about it. And, you know, these are members in our community. We felt like we probably should agree to do this, but with the condition that there's a hard end date at the end of 2022. And, and it's, they recognize that it's not a contract. We, we are, we are not in network with Kaiser.
So what does it mean financially? Somebody comes and uses this service. How is it billed?
That we would bill Kaiser and they have indicated that they would pay the bill charges for services in the clinics.
With no customary discount, you give somebody with a contractor? That's what I'm trying to understand is one of our issues was the difficulty in him to pay. You know, it's my understanding, the billing used a lot of personnel hours to resolve Kaiser issues.
It, it did. And it just, I don't, I, I, there may be some billing challenges with Kaiser, but I, I would expect they would honor the, the agreement to pay for these services and not put up near the hassle that they have in the past.
But are they paying rack rate? What's the, you know, because there's, everyone pays a different rate. What is the rate that they would get with this agreement? At least if I understand how this business works, you sign a contract with the insurance company that determines base rates.
They pay our bill charges.
100% of bill charges.
Okay.
The issue is what is the impact to the patient is now paying substantially more than when we set those rates, we anticipated people are going to pay. So I think some of those details we still need to work out. Yeah, they are, but if we bill them 100 bucks, they're supposed to pay them 100 bucks.
And, you know, we're talking about 200 people for one year. It seems, even though it's going to be kind of a pain, I mean, it's, it's not going to be that much of a pain.
But, but will those people see a bill to them that seems higher than they expect because of this lack of contract? Which again, it's going to end up coming back and somehow we're the bad guys.
Yeah, that's, that we still need to work out.
It, it's a potential, it, that is a, that's not acceptable.
Yeah.
So.
And it just seems strange. We warned them almost 18 months ago. And they waited till November 30th, 31 days before the year ends. I mean, is that seem strange way to do business or?
Well, you know, we, as I, as I've mentioned earlier, we had an earlier conversation a couple of months ago and where they were seeking to mend fences.
Yeah.
And that we didn't, we didn't feel it was genuine. And
But to your point, John, they entered into a two-year contract when their contract with us was expiring.
Yeah.
So clearly they, it was a disconnect.
They're asking you to rescue them.
Essentially, essentially, but.
Because if you Because if you say no, what happens?
I don't know that we're trying to rescue Kaiser per se, we're trying to rescue patients that within our community. And that, that's really how I.
At the end of the day, that's the deciding factor, but I just feel.
I don't know the answer. Now, they've offered a product they can't support. So it's between them and the insurance commissioner and I don't know what the ramifications or the remedy for that would be. So I, I'm hoping and I'm sensing and I'm hoping, you know, those, those folks that were the one-offs and so passionate about, they only have Kaiser. I'm hoping we're going to capture some of those.
Yeah.
And it's, it's really specialty services that they're asking for. So that many people participate.
So since there are a lot of other healthcare districts on this side of the state, like Kaiser did this too. Do we think that they set this to the other health, healthcare districts too?
The same request, basically.
Yeah, the same request to other provider districts around the, on this side of the state.
Not that I, no, I, I don't know the answer to that. But I, as far as I know, they're still in Yakima and continue to be contracted with Yakima Valley. So I, I think, I think it's, we're unique, the county is unique and we're the only provider or for the primary provider of services, health services in Kitah test county. And they, they need some, like I say, they need some sort of, in this case, an alternative access delivery network to make sure they're not sideways with the OIC.
Well, I definitely support helping our community members. I just, or is somehow going to come back and bite us?
Yeah, we'll.
Carefully negotiate how this all is going to play out.
Anyway, with, our plan is to, to work with them on this. One, but just wanted you aware of everything.
Appreciate that, yeah, yeah.
After one or two years?
One year, it would be for the end of, through the end of two thousand twenty-two.
Because this was the first year of the contract.
Twenty-one was the first year.
Yeah, so it's just the second year of the contract.
And it's not, for us, it's not a contract because we're, it's, it's an alternative network of some sort. And I don't have anything else. I mean, oh, excuse me. Um, this is, we talked about this last month. This is with the, the growth in revenue. There's a corresponding increase in expenses in two thousand twenty-one. And so this is an amendment to make sure that we are authorized to pay all the expenses that we will have in two thousand through the end of the year. So this is a, an initial twelve million dollar increase in our approved operating expense budget to take it from ninety-two million to a hundred and four, a hundred and five million dollars.
Kind of like the federal government is doing this weekend. They just pass hopefully.
Maybe.
No filibuster.
So, any discussion on that? We need a motion then, right?
A motion to approve the resolution number twenty-one oh six, a budget amendment.
Oh, second.
Motion by Matt, second by John, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No, no, thank you.
You have the original.
I don't know of any board reports or education and whole business, I don't know of any new business. We have started this CEO evaluation, so I think the email went to the senior leadership and a few other people. So we'll get that going and try to finish that before the end of the year. Erica will do that. Yeah, Teamsters contract.
Yeah, so I can do this or Amanda, I don't want to have to look over my shoulder. Um, we learned on Tuesday evening that the membership of the Teamsters local seven sixty overwhelmingly, I believe was the term ratified the contract that we agreed to. So again, I'll let Amanda talk about sort of the terms and what happens next.
Yeah, so we, we did end up in November in two partial days of negotiations that were very successful. We came to the table with a pretty comprehensive compensation plan. And really we had goals for our own staff development and our recruiting. It's a very tough recruitment market out there. And so we had some, we were very aligned in our goals and both coming in good faith to the bargaining table, which I think really, really helped this be an effective and positive process. And so really the most of the conversation was of course around rate, wages and standard premiums. So we did have some increase in premiums around per diem, lead pay, weekend differential. And really that's part of our normal process is to look at the market for all differentials in addition to base salaries. And then we had a really comprehensive compensation plan that Jen Strater in HR has been working on really throughout the year and continuing to look at the market with the way things have been going with the pandemic. And the, the strategy was really not just a set increase. You know, it's pretty standard, you get a five percent one year, the second year you get, you get seven percent. You know, there's really set rates for, that affect everybody equally across the contract. This strategy was really to make sure that we're rightsizing the market and high demand positions and really being fluctuating for the actual talent and skills that the, that our employees have. And so some of our employees, for example, got a five percent increase, others got up to a twenty, in, in our, in our twenties percent of increase because that's where they would be on their scale and with market. So several factors that we look into, we have a pretty comprehensive compensation philosophy. And we were very pleased that they accepted our proposal with that. And now we have a predictable way that our employees can advance through the, the steps in the scale and be recognized for their skills in the market. So we're very excited about that. They accepted the proposal with some negotiations back and forth with specific increase rates, of course, which is normal. But we did end with each scale, which is appendix A in the contract. Some other kind of highlights of some key areas that came up was around the lead role. We have a designation of a lead as specifically right now of our most defined areas within our housekeeping department. We have a very defined lead role there and she's been there a while. But we have interest and Teamsters had interest in expanding that into other areas where there could be career developments and recognizing some of our senior or experienced or really high performing staff that could move into a lead position. So we kind of, we looked at the structure of that lead role, making it more formal and clear on what those expectations are. And with those responsibilities, they adjusted the, the rate of pay for that as well. And so that was a lot of our conversation. And we're also very excited as part of our staff development plan that we talked about last year. We are offering, and you'll see my update in my report as well, certification pay and certification premium for staff. And we spent a lot of time on this. And again, Jen was very thoughtful, she went out and researched several examples of certifications for everybody represented in that room to show, we want to support you with your continuing education. Here's some options that you could provide. I think a hundred percent of them had virtual options, so very accessible to our staff. And then we would offer a certification premium for that as well. And so those were some really big areas between the lead and professional development that are aligned with our staff development plan. And then of course, our compensation proposal, which is a very innovative way, I think, to look at compensation, be flexible with the market. So it's very positive.
Can I just, I, I just want to, so that you understand, Teamsters represents our dietary aides, our laundry aides, housekeeping, materials technician, cooks, patient care technicians, dietary techs, our buyer and materials management and division coordinators. So it's a very diverse group and a tough, a tough group because of that diversity. You know, WSNA have a single audience to talk with.
Mind me getting pleased about how many, how many employees we took in?
Eighty-eight. And they were, just again, I just have to commend human resources in a very strategic way. When I saw some eyebrows go up when we said twenty percent increase. One of the things we were trying to overcome is in, in housekeeping aide, laundry aide and dietary aide, I believe, they were held at a single rate for the first five or six years of employment. That was kneecapping us in our ability to recruit new people. So that's where you saw that big jump, so that we can recognize people. So literally from year to year, for the first five years you worked here, all you got was a cost of living adjustment. You didn't get any recognition for the time that you were here. We felt pretty strongly that we needed to correct that. So, but you know, this impacted Jim Gallagher's votes, Vicky's people, obviously Ron and, and those. So, but it was very successful negotiation. And, and I also, human resources was very focused on addressing some of the issues that came out of our employee engagement survey and looking at ways that we could demonstrate our appreciation and reward people who were investing in their skills and career.
It's a three-year.
Three years. Yep.
Thanks for all your efforts.
Yeah.
Sounds like every, both sides end up happy.
It was great.
We don't need a motion.
We do.
We've got a resolution.
No, these are three copies of the contract that I need to sign and you need to sign with the board.
All right. So we need a motion to approve Teamsters meeting.
I would move to approve the three Teamster contracts that have been negotiated.
Motion by John, second, second by Matt, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, no opposed, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the hard work. Anything, we do have executive session?
We do, and I have asked that Vicky, Amanda and Mandy say.
Great.
Join that executive session.
We'll call you if that works, since you're the only one.
Okay, um, can I text you my landline that has the best connection?
Yep.
Thanks, everybody. All right, so.
Half an hour maybe, yeah.
Half an hour, so we'll take like a ten-minute break. Seven, ten. Executive session. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.